Well, good morning, everyone. Let's get started here. This is John Neumann. It's my pleasure to call this work session of the Texas Environmental Commission on Environmental Quality to order. Today is Thursday, September 24th, 2020. The time is 9:31 a.m. on my clock, and I'll begin with the roll call. Commissioner Lindley, I see you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Janekka?
Good morning.
Good morning. So our commissioners are all present, and how about our general counsel, Ms. Smith? Are you there?
I am. Good morning.
Good morning. And our public interest counsel?
Good morning. I'm here.
Good morning, Vic. And how about Director Baker? Are you there? Toby, you want to check your mute button?
Yeah, I'm here, Chairman.
Good morning. So we have three notice items. Item one has been continued until next week. Item three is reserved for executive session, but we will not meet an executive session today. So today's work session will focus solely on item two relating to compliance and enforcement. We'll begin by having Ms. Smith call the item, then we'll take any preliminary comments from the commissioners. After that, we'll take the staff's presentation. And finally, we will be allowing public comment on this item, so we'll take those comments after the staff's presentation. And colleagues, of course, in this work session, feel free to interject any questions or comments as we go. And with that, Ms. Smith, I'll ask you to please call item two.
Item number two is the discussion on general compliance and enforcement strategies, proposed revisions to the commission's penalty policy, and potential revisions to the commission's compliance history rule.
Thank you. And colleagues, I don't have any opening comments this morning, but I wanted to give each of you an opportunity to share any preliminary thoughts, if you have any. Commissioner Lindley?
No.
No?
Thank you.
You're too kind, Chairman. No, thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, Toby, we're going to turn it over to you. I'll invite you to recognize your staff and go ahead and present the item. And also make sure that you touch on sort of the procedural posture for the few things we'll be discussing this morning. I understand that the compliance history rulemaking would be a standard rulemaking. We haven't really initiated that process yet, but it'll go through the regular APA, notice and comment procedure, be published in the Texas Register, et cetera. As for the penalty policy, it's not a rule. It's merely a policy that we're able to adopt without that formality, but I wanted you to address what procedure you have planned for the penalty policy and where we are on that track. And with that, Toby, I'll turn it over to you.
Excellent. Thank you, Chairman. I'll definitely, I will address that procedure when we get to that point. If you guys would indulge me, I'm going to sort of lay this out from sort of several different angles, and then at the end, I thought it might be better for me to lay it out and wait till the end to sort of get to questions and thoughts. And we have a number of people on the line today, lots of attorneys and experts on enforcement and compliance. And so I thought, I don't, I honestly don't know how many and who we have on. We have quite a few on. And so as needed, I think we would have them come on to answer specific questions that you guys might have if needed. But, um, but thank you so much for calling this work session today. I think this is a really important topic. And I'll start from just the stepping into this role, from the commission role. I had a goal in mind when I took the job of Executive Director, and that goal was to provide the most efficient permitting process in the United States while demanding full accountability within the bounds of TCEQ authority. And I think when I look at that goal, the first part of the goal, we've made tremendous strides on, and I'm going to look at air specifically. We've reduced our backlog for NSR permits by 92%. Our permit processing times for the number of permits exceeding our targets has decreased from 388 to 43. The percentage of permits exceeding target, our timing target, has decreased from 34% to 8%. I think our NSR case-by-case numbers really illustrate this. The time to get to the draft permit stage under the old process, it took 219 days for a major permit, a non-expedited major permit, and 115 days for a minor. Under the process that Tony Bear's put in place in our air division, we're now at 147 days for a major and 70 days for a minor. I think this is just a snapshot of the success that we've had in fulfilling the goal that I had coming into this role. And my plan is to continue that success and take that to every corner of the agency, get better, get more efficient, get faster. In driving toward that success, you know, we have, we have been meeting those goals, but I think on the, that's only in regards to the first part of the goal. I think we've been lagging on the second part of the goal, which revolves around the idea of accountability. And I've asked myself, now that I've been in this role for over two years, why? Why is that piece more challenging or seeming to be more challenging than the first piece? And I think it's a complicated answer. And I think in different, at different times, I've had a conversation with you guys about this, that the underlying challenge we have is that we're not a process safety regulator. At the end of the day, we regulate emissions. We regulate discharges. We regulate pollution. I think that this, this challenge causes confusion with the public. It causes confusion with the press, and it causes confusion with the legislature at times. You couple this with what I would call new expectations regarding monitoring and transparency. And while we are not a first responder agency, I feel like more and more we are treated as such and are expected to be on the scene almost immediately with real-time air data going out as soon as an event happens. So in the wake of a number of high-profile industrial accidents over the last, the past few years, where we have ended up playing an integral role in supplying data to local officials so they can make correct decisions to protect their citizens. And frankly, we've had to answer for the process safety failures through those events that are really outside the bounds of our authority. I was left struggling with, with a question. And the question in my mind is, how can we possibly impact safety, maintenance, decision-making within the bounds of the authority of TCEQ? Not necessarily, not necessarily an easy answer to come by. As I look to the mission of the agency, our mission contemplates this idea. And I'll just read it. The Texas Commission on Environmental Quality strives to protect our state's public health and natural resources consistent with sustainable economic development. Our goal is clean air, clean water, and the safe management of waste. And I came to the conclusion that the large-scale events that we've dealt with over the past few years are really incompatible with the mission of our agency, and they're incompatible in three separate ways. The first is, you know, very clearly, they're not protective of public health when we have a large event like this. Second, they're not protective of Texas' natural resources. You know, if you think about the discharge, whether it be from the plant itself or from the firefighting foam used to put out those fires. And then finally, these events are not consistent with sustainable economic development. And I think this is very important to hit on. From a real economic impact, and I'll take the ITC fire, for instance, that fire shut down the Ship Channel for a number of days. It also shut down surrounding facilities for a number of days. That had a real impact on the economy, probably to the tune of billions of dollars. When you can't get ships in and out of the Houston Ship Channel, you bring the whole thing to a halt, and arguably can cause other safety issues. But that's not the only sort of economic impact that we, that we see. The second is what I would call the soft economic impact, or the social license to operate. When one facility has a large event like this, it impacts all the facilities, whether they're good operators or poor operators. And that's not necessarily fair to those operators who are doing the right thing. And then finally, it's a complete, from an economic standpoint, it's a complete waste of public resources. For us, it's almost impossible. And we can be a good steward of our emergency management funds, but as you know, we spend an incredible amount of money when, when these events happen, especially events that last days or possibly weeks. And I don't think the public is okay. I think they're okay with us responding, but the amount of money we burn to do that, of public money that we burn to do that is, can be unacceptable. So based on that and how that lies within our, I think that addresses where, what our mission lays out for us. I believe there are two prongs that sort of answer the question of how, how do we drive, how do we drive better decision-making? How do we drive safety? How do we drive process within the bounds of our authority? And I think that there's, it starts with a view inside the agency. And what I'd like to really make sure that you hear is that we've started that process. We've, we're driving towards more and better experienced investigators. We're driving towards better data and better technology. We're driving towards better transparency. We're driving towards being more hands-on with our investigators. And some of the tools that we've been using, first and foremost, is the office of the Attorney General. I think that you've noticed, under our recent leadership, we've referred, we've referred quite a, quite a few cases to the Attorney General's office. My plan as Executive Director is to continue to do that on an as-needed basis. The next is looking at retention of environmental investigators. When we started the deep dive inside of the agency to see what we could do, we found that, especially in certain offices, Beaumont, Houston, Midland, but it's not just, it's not, this is not just a problem in those offices, but across the state, but that's where we really see the problem is in those offices. We see high turnover. We essentially bring in young investigators. We train them up. They learn what to look for in a large facility. And then almost without fail, they get hired by private industry, or they get hired by other local governments because they can make more money. And I don't, I mean, I don't have the goal of keeping them for their entire career inside of TCEQ, but if I could find a way to keep them another year to three years, it's sort of like what we did with air permitting. If I could keep them another year to three years, I get a deeper bench. I get more experience. I get better relationships with the regulated entities, which ultimately, I think, leads to better compliance. And so we found money inside of the agency, and we were able to raise the base pay for environmental investigators for, base pay for environmental investigators at every level in our Beaumont, Houston, and Midland offices. Ultimately, I would like to take that forward as part of our LAR, to ask to be able to do that statewide during the next legislative session. We also used money that we had within the agency to add to our monitoring capabilities. So outside of any specific appropriation, we are bringing three new auto GCs online around the Houston Ship Channel. We also have updated all of our handheld monitoring equipment to ultra, ultra-rays, which, as you know, are able to speciate for benzene. And those have been incredibly useful in all of the, in all of the events that we've had to respond to recently. We can immediately have somebody out there. We have them out there all night. You oftentimes see it on Facebook, folks out one and two in the morning monitoring after these events. And the legislature was very helpful as well in that they gave us additional money for mobile monitoring resources. So we now have three vans that are true mobile monitoring assets. We really learned our lesson on that through Hurricane Harvey and having to rely on EPA and their talk of us, and found that that was an incredibly useful tool. We've already been able to deploy those assets. We use them for Hurricane Laura. And I'm sure you guys saw the graphic that sort of created the caterpillar, but my hope is, is that we can continue to get better at using those assets. That was really our first deployment of them, and I think it was very successful. My hope would be, and we just discussed this, is retrofitting a few more agency vehicles and trying to keep those vehicles stationed in certain offices, that being Beaumont, Houston, and Corpus to begin. We have also undertaken and committed agency resources to flyovers of industrial areas. So we've completed a number of flyovers with helicopters, especially with special equipment that actually can look at heavy industrial sites and try to identify leaks before they become a larger problem. And then finally, we, we, leading up to COVID, we were going to go down the path of what I would call enhanced investigations based on risk and fence line monitoring. I think, as you know, EPA rolled out a fence line rule that monitors for benzene at, at, at a different, at refineries across Texas, across the United States. Looking at those benzene numbers, plus the number of receptors, locations of schools, compliance history, we're starting the process of trying to identify just a handful of facilities to go in and do what I would call a more hands-on, a more hands-on investigation, stuff that we haven't done in a number of years, where we go in with our own cameras based on looking at emissions, then go in with, you know, the best equipment that we can essentially put into a plume and monitor emissions at the source. We've had to table that because of our COVID-19 response and obviously having to coordinate with those facilities who are having to address COVID concerns as well. But when safe and when appropriate, our plan is to continue with that idea. So internally, that's the list of the things that we've done. Externally, the two tools that we have are our penalty policy and our compliance history rule. From both perspectives, I feel like facilities that are operating well, that are within, in compliance, shouldn't have an issue with either one of these ideas. I think in some ways, the good, by changing the penalty policy, by possibly changing the compliance history rule, we're protecting the good operators from the bad operators. And so, or the poor operators. And so what I'm bringing forward today are a number of changes to the penalty policy that I think will provide more accountability and more accountability for facilities that are located with a large number of receptors nearby. And for compliance history, what we're bringing forward is a common sense approach to the idea of answering the question of compliance history after a major event. I'm going to focus on that, and then I'll go back to the penalty policy. As far as compliance history goes, the events that I'm talking about very specifically are the ITC fire, the TPC explosion, the Chemco event. ITC shut down the Houston Ship Channel for a number of days. It shut down its fellow facilities nearby, its neighbors, for a number of days, impacted the reputation of the entire industry, and caused us to spend thousands and thousands of dollars in responding. Not only us, but local governments as well. The TPC facility, if you remember, exploded the day before Thanksgiving, resulting in a four-mile evacuation of approximately somewhere between 45,000 and 55,000 people the day before Thanksgiving. That's, while it was, it was the right decision from a safety standpoint, that's unacceptable. And then finally, the Chemco incident, I believe killed two individuals in that, in that incident. So these are the types of, of events that beg the question, how could a TPC run their compliance history formula and come out being satisfactory after having that occur? And that's exactly where they are right now. That, in my mind, doesn't comport with just the basic idea of common sense. And it's really hard to sit in front of the public or the legislature and say, yes, that TPC site is a satisfactory site after what it, what occurred and what it put the public through. And so the ask on compliance history is really, you know, what we gave to you guys was pretty high level. There's not a lot of detail in there, but the idea of taking certain circumstances that are so extreme that they have to be considered. And I think the, the challenge there is there's a gap in the way the compliance history rule works. It does not allow us as an agency to adjust, to address those specific issues, things like ITC, TPC, and Chemco. And so if I'm thinking about the types of circumstances at a very high level, it would be causing a death. It would be shutting down the Houston Ship Channel for a number of days. It would be massive evacuation. So the run-of-the-mill, the small events, the stuff that just sort of happens at some of these facilities, that's not what we're talking about. But what I would like to really discuss is the idea of being able to adjust and provide a common sense approach to these, these events that are just beyond the pale as far as the public is concerned. I'll jump back to the penalty policy. I'm going to highlight three things in the penalty policy that I think are probably the, the three pieces that are, will cause the most discussion. And then I'll probably turn it over to Brian Sinclair to go through it line by line after that. But there's, there's three specific changes that I think will dramatically change the penalty policy. The first is based on, it's a 7-1-0-5 civil suit rule. The commission is required to refer matters to the Attorney General's office for enforcement through a civil suit for a certain number of reasons. One of those is if a, if entity is subject, the two or more final issued administrative penalty orders for violations occurring at the same facility within two years, the two years immediately preceding the date of the first alleged violation. So what that means is, is once you hit that threshold, we are required as an agency to refer you to the Attorney General's office. At that point, you would possibly be subject to civil penalties, penalties that go well beyond what this agency can do through its administrative process. At the same time, we offer a deferral for entities who come in and settle quickly with us of 20%. And in my mind, there was a break there that I couldn't get my head around. How could we offer a 20% deferral to an entity that by law was now being referred to the AG and possibly subject to civil penalties? And so the first change that I'd like to highlight is the idea of getting rid of that deferral if you are in the now category of being immediately referred to the AG's office. So that's the first, the first change. The second is addressing flexibility with the agency. One of the great, one of the great frustrations I had as a commissioner was when I saw the same facility up in front of me over and over and over and over again. And there just seemed to be not much that we could do there, sort of under the binds of the old penalty policy. And so what we've asked to do with this new one is on, specifically on determining the number of violation events, is essentially allowing up to more, the counting of more events. So for example, if you go to, I think it's, it's table, it's table eight, and we systematically, through each, each level of a programmatic, a potential release or an actual release, allow the number of events that could attach to what those penalties are to be increased. So for programmatic, we, for a minor event, instead of a single event, we go up to quarterly. For a moderate event, we go from quarterly up to monthly. And major is still up to daily. For potential releases, a minor, a minor, minor potential release goes from a single event up to quarterly. A moderate goes from quarterly up to monthly. A major goes from monthly to weekly. And then for actual releases, for a minor, it goes from quarterly to monthly. For moderate, monthly to weekly, and then major is still daily. So what that would mean is, so for example, for a potential moderate, instead of allowing the commission to land at four separate violations, you would now possibly be able to land at 12 if it went on for an entire year. And the idea there is, it's important to note that the language says up to. It, we don't have to go there, but to have that flexibility, I think, allows for the agency and the commission to adapt and address what we see as violators who just, who are constantly coming in front of you, and hopefully address some of that frustration. And then finally, using the other factors that justice may require, we're recommending that the base penalty, base penalty for an emissions event be increased by 20% in counties with a population of 85,000 or greater. I would like to just note that we would like to change that 85,000 to 75,000. Looking at the latest census numbers, when this was originally written, the, the numbers were different for one particular county, and that county is now slightly below 85,000. And by dropping it to 75,000, we feel like we would capture most of the counties where you have a significant population butting up against some of these really heavy industrial sites. And in some cases, we have the industrial sites that are right across the county line. And so it's really not the, that county that's being impacted, it's the county next door that's being impacted. And so this would allow us to capture that. So we would like to change the 85,000 to 75,000. So those are the three large changes that we'd like to make with regards to the penalty policy. And I thought that concludes my portion of this, and I could turn it over to Brian Sinclair now to go line by line through the penalty policy, or stop and take any sort of high-level questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry about that, folks. I'm back. Thanks for your comments, Toby. Colleagues, any comments at this point? Mr. Lindley?
Excuse me. I don't think so. I definitely have some questions, but I guess I'll, I might wait just a little bit. Well, let me ask kind of a question. I'm pretty sure I know the answer to, but I just kind of want it to be discussed real quick. When we're talking about raising fees and, you know, how much money, a potential When we're talking about raising fees and, you know, how much money, a potential increase that's going to be generated, where does that money go? Because it's my understanding, and I just want to, you know, make it clear for anyone that might be attending in, that penalty amounts really don't benefit the TCEQ. By and large, those fees mostly go to general revenue. And so, I don't ever want this to be construed as some sort of way for the agency to be accruing more money or making, we don't make money, but, you know, taking more money in. That might be a budget question, but that's my understanding. I just kind of want it to be, you know, said and just recognized. And if that's wrong, I can be corrected by all means. But I just don't want this to be construed as a, we're raising, we're trying to get more penalty dollars because it could be a tight budget session or some wild idea like that. So, just make that overall general comment kind of question.
Commissioner, can we pause there? That's a really good question slash point. Toby, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, we have, we have the budget gurus, you know, I believe out there in the ether, I can't see them. If somebody, is Elizabeth or Kelly on that could address that specifically? That is my understanding, Commissioner, that it goes, we do not benefit from those penalties. And that was never, ever part of the contemplation in bringing this forward.
If I might ask a question that you could respond to, kind of high level generally, Toby, I'm curious to hear what aspects of this proposal most satisfy your concerns personally in running the clock forward on a hypothetical experiment and posit a executive director in the agency's, leading the agency diametrically opposed to you in terms of manner of thinking and general worldview, what aspects of our agency's existing policies and then the proposed changes, the scope of these changes, what, where are the belts and suspenders that help satisfy you that the degree of flexibility that I think these changes build in and give some new, some new authority to ED to make a little more discretionary range in their choices? Where are they constrained in this plan, in your view?
Sure. Commissioner, I think the first one is with the commission. Ultimately, you three are the check on the executive director's authority in decision-making. And, you know, anything that comes onto the enforcement docket will ultimately be coming in front of you three or commissioners, you know, different commissioners in the future. So, I think the, so I think the first answer and probably the strongest answer is with my bosses, which are you three. So, that, so that gives me comfort. I think that the other thing is that by creating a policy that's on paper, that the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on. And Chairman, I realize I just neglected to address this piece of it. The idea here is that if you guys are okay with this at the end of the day, we will take it forward, we'll put out a press release, and then we will put out the penalty policy for a thirty-day comment period. And so, we'll take a number of comments from all sides about that. Hopefully, it will make it even better, and then we will bring it back to you for final approval. So, once that's done, it locks it in. Commissioner Janekka into what's on that paper. And so, I think that's, that is, that's comforting and to know that the public will all have an opportunity to weigh in and share their thoughts on it. And then ultimately, I think the compliance history rule is probably where the most concern, I think what you're alluding to, the most concern probably lies with how the compliance history rule is crafted. And again, my thought there is, we have to be really careful and thoughtful about what we define as the exigent circumstances that allow an entity to sort of fall into that under-review idea. And I think if we're really thoughtful about how we do that and we don't expand that to a list that sort of captures everything out there, then I think that we will bind future executive directors from having the ability to go down that road. And so, that's where I think that if we're really thoughtful in the way we craft that and we, then we'll be able to, we'll be able to put the proper guardrails in place to make sure that that's not taken advantage of in the future. And it's important to note that the procedure there is, it's a full rulemaking, as the chairman alluded to. So, the public will be able to weigh in, we will take public comment on that rule, and it will go through the full administrative procedure, you know, around the rulemaking for the agency. So, my hope is that just through that, we land at the right language, and then ultimately it will have to be adopted by you guys. So, any, if you feel that it goes too far or doesn't go far enough, you'll have the opportunity to, to, to possibly change things if, as needed.
Thank you. Thanks, Toby. Thanks, Commissioner Janekka, for your question. Mr. Lindley, I had interrupted you. Let's get back to your comments or observations. And I'll just add my understanding, too. Administrative penalties go into general revenue. That belongs to the legislature to allocate however they like. It does not come to the agency, certainly not automatically, but really doesn't come without the legislature giving us general revenue dollars. Most of our agency is funded through fees, just a small portion through general revenue. So, it is not the case that we are adding to our budget by exacting greater administrative penalties. Okay, but let's get back to your comments, Commissioner Lindley, because I did, we did sort of run off on a detour.
No, no, that's, it was a helpful and a healthy detour, I would say. That's my understanding, too. I just kind of wanted, you know, to confirm, and it might be that there's a tiny, tiny portion of the administrative penalties that goes to, you know, directly to the agency. I really can't remember, and I probably should, because I know I've been in a lot of discussions on this kind of thing. But my understanding is by and large, that money, you said it very well, goes to GR and then legislature, you know, doles it out how they wish. But while we were talking, I kind of thought of another question, and I don't expect anyone to have an answer on this right now, but I'm just kind of curious. And, you know, I'd really love to know how it worked out or how it would work out for an ITC or a Chemco. I don't, I don't think we can use that as the example because I think they're still in litigation. But it would be, I would be curious to know, you know, if this new penalty policy had in place, had been in place when this happened, what kind of administrative penalties we'd be looking at? Again, we'd probably have to need to go back further in time and pick a better example in one of those three, because I think that's probably a little too, I don't even know if we could do that since there's still pending litigation or whatever. But it'd be interesting to see how this is applied to a situation like actual hard numbers. Again, I don't expect anyone to have that today, here and now, but I would be curious to just, you know, see that eventually.
Commissioner, could I?
Three categories, right? A major, anyway, in all the categories. Sorry. Fucked up.
Hey, Commissioner, could I jump in on that real quick? You know, I think for an event of that size and that magnitude, it would still ultimately end up at the Attorney General's Office because of the how, just the magnitude of that, of that sort of, that sort of event. I think the ultimate goal here is really not, as far as the penalty policy goes, is really not to put that, look at that through the, through the context of an ITC. The way I view the penalty policy is a tool to try to drive better maintenance and safety decision-making, leading up to hopefully, hopefully helping avoid an ITC by providing more accountability to entities sort of along the way. And the hope is, is that somewhere along the way, as they notice, they have an emission event and they notice that possibly they have a seal that's failing that needs to be addressed, or they notice that in, when that seal fails, they don't have an alarm system set up to alert anyone if there's a, if there's a, some sort of leak, you know? But hopefully, by raising the bar slightly on the penalties, you're driving some better decision-making on the front end, and then you ultimately can avoid the ITC or the TPC or the Chemco event.
Yeah, and, you know, saying all that, I don't disagree at all. I mean, you're right. I think those kind of events are exceptional, which is good. But I think, I think for me, it would be interesting to see, because the reality is, you know, the penalty policy does affect everyone, big, municipal, whatever. And so, I am interested to see, you know, just looking at old examples, what, I'm not sure it's going to change anything, I just don't know. But, you know, looking at what it's going to do to those, to those smaller entities, you know, again, I'm not sure it would change the outcome of anything, but I'm just, I'm curious to see what we're looking at, for example, a, you know, wastewater discharge, you know, something that we see in front of us a lot. And I'm just curious to see, you know, once this new penalty, once these new, what, you know, numbers-wise, what that's actually going to look like. Because I agree, those, those big events are going to be probably always at the AG's office, and those probably really aren't the best examples. But, you know, there are a number of waste issues and water issues and, you know, I don't know, maybe the other two gentlemen might not be as curious as I am, but I'm curious to see how the changes apply, what that looks like, just on a, maybe a smaller scale.
We can, we, we can definitely run some different scenarios for you. I'll be honest, and Brian Sinclair, I believe, is on the line. I don't know if we've run those for today, but we, but we can run those for you and make sure we get that data to you.
Yeah, and I wouldn't have expected it today, anyway, so, no worries. I guess going back to the original question, I think we've answered it, but if Elizabeth or Kelly are on the line and they need to clean up anything we said, I'll let them chime in now, and then, and then I'll be good. You know, I have other questions, but we can get into the, Brian's line by line and go from there.
Thanks, Commissioner Lindley. I'm glad you brought that up, because I had the same question. You know, my understanding is that administrative penalties go into the general revenue. I'm not aware of any exception for a small portion that might get carved out to the agency. The one exception, though, of course, are the supplemental environmental projects where sometimes we will allow those, the penalties, administrative penalties, to be used to clean up or prevent pollution through different kinds of projects. But apart from the supplemental environmental projects, it's my understanding that all of those dollars go to general revenue. So, that's, that's an open question. I don't know if Elizabeth or Kelly or...
They may not. They may not be affected.
This is Elizabeth St. Francis Cook for the record, Director of Budget and Planning. I didn't hear all the conversation, but with regards to penalties, those are deposited to the general revenue, as you stated, Chairman.
Okay, and just to be clear, there's no small carve-out that would stay with the agency?
If, as far as I know, I don't believe so. I mean, I, no, we are not receiving any penalties for appropriations.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Chairman, this is Brian Sinclair. I believe that there is one exception, but I'm, I can't find the exact place it goes, but I believe that for some dry cleaner penalties, that it goes into a specific account for some sort of dry cleaner remediation. And I believe that's the exception, the one that I'm aware of.
I can check on that one as well, just to make sure.
Thank you. Maybe, let's come back to that question later, once staff has had a chance to marshal a complete answer on that. And so, we'll pick that up later. Feel free to interject as soon as, as soon as you're comfortable that you've got a definitive answer. And then Commissioner Lindley, I wanted to respond to another, you know, your concern about how would this affect a regulated entity in different cases? And in my mind, what the penalty policy changes are doing is creating greater flexibility. And so, that gives the executive director discretion to sort of, more discretion to tailor an appropriate penalty. So, I'm not, I'm not real concerned about getting trapped into a situation where we're, you know, over-penalizing. I think it opens up flexibility so that we're no longer under-penalizing. It's just the way that I, that's the way I frame it. Commissioner Janekka, you have any additional comments?
Opening my mouth slightly behind the mute button, I would love to just second Commissioner Lindley's request. I think that's a really helpful one, and that's a great exercise. I, I'm sure staff have done that at some point prior to right now, because that's how our counterparts in the legislature, how other colleagues who don't work and breathe and understand viscerally what penalty policy really is and how that changes the outcomes and interaction we have with the industry, they have to plug in examples and run it under the previous penalty policy. How egregious could the ED make the penalty in this sort of a violation? How limited are they in keeping it really small? And have that run in a version one current, fourth draft, fifth draft, showing the bounds, I think, is certainly a useful, can be kept as a discreet exercise. I'd love to see that analysis in terms of helping the public better understand what these changes make or what they mean in terms of, the ED would have the discretion to charge X to Y, X to Y. And I certainly agree that the discretion builds in a very convenient escape valve. But there's also a counterfactual hypothetical people are a little worried about, about an overly zealous, an overly enthusiastic set of commissioners and set of executive directors. So, I very much want to make sure that I'm trying to help build some, build some belts and suspenders into constraining our future replacements and colleagues who, institutionally, do we need to keep in mind for that, that future course of the agency as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Janekka. And I guess, staff, wherever you think it's appropriate to build those hypotheticals or those models and maybe put them out with the proposed rule when they go out for comment or certainly in response to comments, but that does sound like, like it would be a helpful exercise. Colleagues, anything else before we turn it over to Brian to go through line by line? Brian, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I was going to just go through the proposed changes, and I don't know if you want to do it kind of based on the, on the summary that we have in the memo, or if you want to do it line by line in the draft copy of the penalty policy. But if it's okay, I'll just use the summary. Okay, and in the introduction, we need to update the applicability language so people will, so staff will understand which version of the penalty policy to apply. We have some statutory limits that are applicable to different periods of time, and so, we have some situations where we'll have to use different, different versions of the penalty policy based on that. The statutory authorizations, what we're proposing to do there is to remove the references to the civil penalties that have been in the penalty policy, that are currently there and in previous versions of it. Since it deals really just with administrative penalties, we would propose to remove the civil penalty information. And then to reorganize the, the program types into alphabetical order so that people can find whatever program that they're interested in a little bit more easily. We are changing the statutory limits for aggregate production operations based on House Bill nine oh seven, which was, which amended Chapter twenty-eight A to change the statutory limits for APOs. We are changing, we're including information on dry cleaner statutory limits that previously, we've, well, we've applied it ever since the legislation back in two thousand and five, but for some reason, it never got put into the penalty policy. So, we're including this in the penalty policy for dry cleaner registration. The incentive bill five thirty in the eighty-six legislature increased statutory limits, statutory maximum for public water supplies from one thousand dollars to five thousand dollars per day. And so, we're, we're putting that in there. We are also proposing to change the major and minor source, one, one change there for petroleum storage... for petroleum storage tank facilities, changing, uh, the threshold for a major source from the current 50,000 gallons, uh, per month throughput, um, uh, to 100,000 gallons a month throughput. We feel like that this will kind of better- better make a distinction between those that are truly major, and, um, and, uh, as you guys see in some of the cases, there are a lot of challenges associated with the cost of compliance for some of these, uh, smaller facilities that may be in that 50,000 to 100,000 gallon per month throughput, and, uh, it would lessen the- the impact of the penalties, um, on them, and hopefully give them, um, more money available to, uh, spend on coming back into compliance. We're proposing to change the environmental property and human health matrix.
Hey, Brian, can I inter- can I interrupt you for a minute? Just staying with the PST, uh, change for a moment. Yeah, I know there had been, um, we'd heard some concerns about, um, burdens to mom-and-pop operators. Are we talking about mom-and-pop operators when we're looking at, uh, that 50,000 to 100,000 gallon, uh, capacity?
Well, certainly- certainly many of them fall into that capacity, um, I mean, i- into that- into that range, and, um, and we see, uh, several of them having to go through financial inability to pay and- and- and really struggling with it. And so, we think that, uh, if we can make this change and- and- and set aside the- the thresh- or increase the threshold for major up to 100,000 gallons, then we get more of the- the larger volume, you know, your truck stops, your, uh, you know, facilities that have, you know, 20 or 30 different pumps, or sometimes 50 or 60, uh, for some of the, uh, uh, truck stops or- or places along the highway. Um, that those are- those are really, really major, and we think that this is, uh, a better threshold for that.
Yeah, in some ways, it seems that the market itself has redefined what a major source is, um, but, um, but certainly that this is designed to give mom and- the mom-and-pop operators some relief and allow them to, um, dedicate their funds to, uh, to correcting problems as opposed to paying penalties seems appropriate to me. I appreciate that detour. Uh, colleagues, any comments at this- this point, anything you want to add?
I don't think so. I don't know, I mean, I'm kind of just curious, I guess, more than anything, about, um, how we- how we landed on the 100,000 number. Um, is it just kind of looking at how many cases come in, and that kind of seemed to be a good, um, breaking point? Or, I don't know, I'm just kind of curious how we landed on that one. I'm not against it, for the record, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, it- it wasn't based on, uh, on hours of diligent research about throughput. Uh, it was- it- it's been a discussion, frankly, within OCE for- for a decade. Uh, do we need to- do we need to change this to some higher threshold because of the impact on the mom-and-pops? Uh, we chose 100,000 gallons because we- we saw that as, you know, your big truck stops, your, um, you know, the, uh, Murphy Oil or Buc-Ee's or those kinds of places tended to be the higher-volume facilities that- that were up above 100,000. There- there are some still- still some mom-and-pop operations that are in excess of 100,000 gallons, but it turns out to be, uh, a fairly small percentage of those.
And just to kind of state the obvious here, but even if it is a small entity, right, a mom-and-pop, if we were to find that they caused some serious environmental damage, they would still be penalized, you know, just the same as a big one, right? I mean, at the end of the day, if- if actual- if there was serious environmental damage, they're not going to get off any easier just because they're smaller, and I can't even think of a good example of what the damage would be, but, does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense, and what we would do is, we would- we would penalize them if they caused actual major impact, then we would penalize them for actual major. Now, if they're- if the, uh, if they're a major source, they would be subject to 100% of the $25,000 max for whatever number of- up to daily. Uh, if they're a minor source, then, uh, currently, they would be subject to 30% of the- of the $25,000 max, um, and- and that's, you know, that's a- a big drop. Uh, but it could go up to daily. Uh, in the proposal that we have, I guess that I'm about to get into, then that major harm for a minor source would be changed from 30% up to 50%, but again, could go up to daily.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Anything else, colleagues?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, Brian. Why don't you go ahead and pick it up with the environment property and human health matrix?
Okay, the- the changes that we're proposing here are to the, uh, actual release category. Uh, we want to, uh, you know, basically, um, make more of a distinction between, uh, actual and potential releases, and, uh, so we're proposing to increase the penalties for, uh, for, um, for major harm, for minor sources from 30 to 50%. For moderate harm, uh, the major source would go from 30 to 50%, and the, uh, minor source would go from 15 to 25% of the statutory limit. Uh, for minor harm, major source would go from 15 to 30% and- per event, um, and, uh, minor source would go from 5 to 15%. We are not proposing any change to the potential release category. Um, and I will- I will observe, uh, this, the question earlier that, uh, Commissioner Lindley had about the- the impact of- of penalties. We're- we're going to run those- those examples, but for the worst of the worst, for major source, um, uh, actual major, this changes, the proposed changes in the penalty policy wouldn't affect that, because it's already $25,000 a day, which is the statutory limit, and, um, we can go up to daily. So, um, there's not a way for us to go higher on that with these changes. But it affects almost everything else. Um, if- if it's okay, we can go on to the programmatic penalty matrix. Uh, we're proposing a change to the major category in the programmatic penalty matrix. Major sources would go from 15 to 20% of the statutory limit, and minor sources would go from 5 to 10% of the statutory limit. The, uh, the motive here is to- is to increase penalties for failure to have authorization to conduct, uh, whatever regulated activity is being conducted. So, if somebody doesn't have a permit or a registration, that it would serve to increase penalties for them. It would also increase penalties for those who, you know, completely failed to turn in a report that was due or, um, have records and those kind of- those kinds of violations that we consider programmatic. Okay, we don't ma- we're not making any, uh, proposal to change the moderate or minor categories. Um, we're proposing, uh, a language change in the- in the, um, matrix for programmatic minor, just to make it a little bit clearer to staff. It really isn't- it's a wording change, it's not a- it- it really doesn't have any substance to it in terms of changing what we do. Um, the next, uh, area that we're proposing changes is in determining the number of violation events. As, uh, as Toby said earlier, um, we are proposing changes, um, in several of the categories. The- the actual moderate would move up from monthly to weekly, up to weekly. Uh, for actual minor, uh, we'd move from up to quarterly to up to monthly. For potential, we- for major violations, or potential, uh, potential major violations, we go up to weekly from where it is now, which is up to monthly. For moderate, from quarterly to monthly, and for minor, which is just a single event now, we would, uh, for continuing minor, uh, potential minor, um, violations, we would go up to quarterly. For programmatic, uh, we would go for moderate up to- from quarterly up to monthly, and for, uh, programmatic minor, um, we'd go up to quarterly for that.
Hey, Brian, quick question, um-
Yes.
And I think- I think I know the answer, but, uh, I think it's just kind of interesting to know, but, um, specifically for this table, um, Table A, when was the last time this table was updated? I mean, it's my understanding it's been quite a while.
The violation events? Oh, and it's, uh, you know, uh, it's not been updated, I don't believe, since the, uh, first penalty policy was put together in, uh, 1997. So, the- the up to whatever number of events has been the same since then. So, if we- if we do this change, it'll be the- the first time it's been changed since the penalty policy was put together.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, uh, we're proposing another wording change, um, um, let's see, let me make sure I'm get that. Um, the- we're proposing a wording change where it- where the policy says "The duration of events will be revised as appropriate to reflect extended non-compliance." When we're deleting some wording there, when it says "When cases fail to settle expeditiously or before referral to the State Office of Administrative Hearings," we're going to omit that, um, the highlighted portion of the sentence, and so that we're- we, um, have the flexibility that's allowed, uh, for amended pleadings under thirty, uh, Admin- Thirty Text Admin Code 80 dot 29. Right? Um, the next, uh, change that I wanted to talk about, um, is, uh, is the deferral that, um, that Toby already mentioned. This would be, um, the- in counties of, well, it says 85,000, as Toby already said, we'd like to change that to 75,000, that we would, uh, for emissions events that occur in a county with that, uh, population, uh, that we would, uh, we would do a 20% enhancement to the penal- to the base penalty for that violation.
Brian, I do have a- a question about that. How many- how many counties in the state would that cover? And let's just assume we're talking about the 75,000 number. And maybe a different way to ask the question is, how many regulated entities would that cover? Because it- it seems like this is creating another- another step, another level of complexity, and it effectively, we are, um, hitting a- a large percentage of regulated entities or geographical scope anyways. Does it make sense to include this adjustment elsewhere? Um, and I'm wondering what- what background work has been developed on- on that, if any, yet?
I don't beli- I- we do not- we have not counted the number of regulated entities that it would impact. I think what we were trying to do when we- we, um, when we looked at this, is we looked at- at areas of the state where there are concentrations of- of industry in proximity to large, uh, centers of population. Um, if we go down to- to 75,000, we'll- we'll get about 86% or so of the population in Texas would be in- in counties that would, you know, that would- that would have this- this, uh, this particular, uh, feature as far as emissions events that occur in that county. And again, it's there to- to, uh, address the- the proximity of, uh, of potential receptors to- to, uh, these types of violations.
And Chairman, this is Toby. I- I think that captures about, and I'm just going off of memory, about somewhere like 49 or 50 counties in the state of Texas.
All right, thanks for that, Toby. I mean, I- I- I think it does make sense for us to ask the question as we're working on this penalty policy. Is there something we should do, uh, to address, you know, concentrations of population? Um, I think for purposes of- of, uh, putting this out for comment and getting, um, getting the public's comment on the penalty policy, I don't think I would change anything, other than the 85 to 75 that you've already noted, um, but, um, I'm not yet convinced that this is the- it's the best way to do it. Um, but, um, hopefully the comments on this point will be- will be broad, um, and focused on how to- how to protect public health. Um, and just in the spirit of brainstorming, another way to slice it is, you know, can you look at, um, areas that are, uh, have a disproportionate burden of pollution? And, yeah, this might pertain- this example just pertains to air quality, but could you say, um, non-attainment counties? Or- or areas that are on the air pollutant watch list, or a combination of that? So, um, I think it's, uh, I think it's appropriate for us to be considering- considering these kinds of impacts and crafting our penalty policy. I'm not sure what the right path forward is yet, but, um, certainly I support putting this language out, uh, out for comment at this point.
Yeah, Chairman, I, um, I had this crazy thought at one point when, um, this topic came up, and I'm actually going to ask for a break here in just a second as well, because I would just like one. But, um, so I had this thought of, okay, um, you know, one, kind of how did we get to that number? Not necessarily a question, it just kind of curious. And then I thought, well, to go the other extreme, if you will, just for the sake of thinking things through, what if I'm a person that lives in an extremely rural county, right? I'm, you know, this captures 40-something counties, but what if I- I am now a resident of Bastrop County, and I honestly have no idea if my- if my new county has the population that would fall into this. But what if there's, um, something horrible, you know? And I- I even went to the West tragedy, and I bet that season McClintock County would fall under this, and it does, they have a population of 280-something thousand. But I thought, what if you have some horrible, horrible deadly explosion, but you're in a rural county? You know, I don't want the agency to be accused of, hey, we might be in this tiny county, but we still want to be, uh, cared for. That's kind of extreme. Um, then did a little more digging, and it, my understanding is, these 40, 50 counties that will now- now fall into, and I think, uh, in the 75,000 range, is truly like 90-something or maybe 90% of the population in Texas. So, that made me feel a lot better, right? Just knowing that, okay, well, the- the small county argument, I mean, someone- someone could make that argument. Um, but I also know, in the event of something extreme like that, um, regardless of the county size, our agency would handle it appropriately, so, you know. I was kind of going to extremes in my head, but I did have that thought of, okay, but what if I'm in a small county? Um, that's not really fair, but I- I- I saw that. I don't necessarily think that's something we need to be extremely concerned about, because the reality is, we are capturing 90% of the population with these numbers. My understanding, again, we are, and we would still deal with the entity and the enforcement matter the same way whether it was in a large county. It just wouldn't, you know, automatic, it wouldn't be automatic, I guess is the way to say, that they would get, um, the 20% increase. Just- just kind of throwing that out there, kind of where my head had been on this at- at one point or another. Um, and we- we can keep talking about this for a minute. I might have another question or two on it, but I would love like a five-minute bathroom break.
Yeah, so, um, why don't- why don't we go ahead and take a break? Um, I've got 10:38 right now, just to keep it on the quarter hour. Why don't we, um, why don't we recess and reconvene, yeah, at 10:45? So, with that, we stand and recess until 10:45. So, with that, we stand and recess until ten forty-five. All right, colleagues, time is ten forty-five AM. We're back after a short recess. I see Commissioner Lindley there and we'll give Commissioner Janekka a moment to join us.
Sorry, I missed a little bit of the question here.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, so we're all present. Commissioner Lindley, I think you were almost mid-sentence or mid-thought or mid-list, something like that. Why don't you continue?
Oh, sure. And now I probably am not gonna be able to spit it out as well, but I did that to myself. So, I apologize if this question kinda comes out. I should've asked it, Seamus Bryan said it because I might butcher trying to repeat some of what he said. But this is kind of just for discussion. There doesn't have to be an answer right now type thing, but just kind of thinking through this automatic, I guess, well, let me ask that question. This twenty percent increased penalty, wait, I'm already confusing things in my head. Let me go back to what the document actually says. Okay, so, um, let's see if I can get this. Well, what topic, Brian Sinclair, what topic were you about to talk about next? Because I might be jumping ahead a little.
Well, if we were, if we were going to continue on from the other factors that justice may require adjustment for counties with eighty-five thousand or seventy-five thousand or greater, you know, for reportable emissions events that are violations. And I was gonna move on to the deferral associated with the mandatory referrals.
Hey, Brian, could I jump in real quick on that other factors one just to finish off one thought on it? It's just important to note that the way we've written this is that it is for reportable emissions events only. And so, if there's some concern about smaller mom and pops, you know, let's think about water, wastewater, those sorts of things, this is really centered around air specifically. And, you know, those emissions events are defined, you know, in statute. So, that's what this would really be focused on, just to be clear.
I think I'm actually good. We can go on to the next topic, I think. I think my questions are probably more for the next topic deferral. So, I'm good for right now, thank you.
All right, thank you. And if it's okay, then we've also been working on a response for the question on general revenue, whether all penalties go to general revenue or not. And so, the information I provided earlier that dry cleaning penalties go to a dry cleaning fund, that's accurate. Elizabeth and I have been corresponding about that. But we are not given specific authority to appropriate those out of that fund. Okay?
Thanks.
All right, so we'll move on to the revision to the deferral portion of the penalty policy. What we're proposing here, as Toby has already laid out, is that if an entity that has a referral has two or more prior administrative penalty orders as set out in the Water Code, section seven dot one oh five B two, B four, and to B six, that those orders, if we are, if we get concurrence from the Office of the Attorney General under Water Code seven dot one oh six to pursue an administrative action, that those orders would not be eligible for the twenty percent deferral provided for in expedited enforcement if they're a sixteen sixty order.
Just for, again, I think I kind of understand this, but just to be very clear, so if there's anyone outside tuning in, my, and I'm probably gonna say some of this wrong, even though I do think I understand it, I'll probably still say it a little wrong. But my understanding is how it works right now currently is if you have two dings, two violations, and they have to be in the same media or maybe medium. So, if you have two air violations and then a third comes on, it's the same type air thing, that's when we're talking about automatic referral to the AG. But if you have a, you know, facility and you have every kind of permit from us, you have an air and you have a water, and then all of a sudden you have another violation that comes back to air, where does that fall in this mix? Is it considered automatic? And I feel like Newman might be the best person to almost even address this because he's so familiar with it. But just for people, I just think it can get confusing sometimes when you hear the number, you know, simple folks like me here, three violations, boom. But it's actually a little bit more detailed than that. And you referenced it when you're rattling off sections of the Water Code. But can you just kind of explain that a little more? I think that's helpful for people to hear.
I'd be happy to. Seven dot one oh five B two deals with chapter twenty-six of the Water Code. So, these would be basically your water quality types of violations. And it would be, you know, two or more finally issued administrative orders for violations of chapter twenty-six. So, it would be media-specific in applying that B two criteria. Really, the same thing applies, or the same thought process applies for B four, which is chapter three sixty-one of the Health and Safety Code. And for seven dot one oh five B six, which is chapter three eighty-two, or, you know, the Texas Clean Air Act of the Health and Safety Code. So, it would be media-specific application for each one of those. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, I just wanted, that was my understanding, but I think you stated it better than I did. So, appreciate that.
Commissioner Lindley, may I make a statement? This is Craig Pritzlau, Deputy Director of Office of Client Enforcement. How are you just in one?
Great, how are you?
If I may make one clarification to, in your question, you made a statement that there's violation, two or more violations. I just wanna clarify that it's, the statute states that for each media, as Brian indicated, it's two or more final issued administrative orders. And so, that's a distinction I wanna make sure is on the record and that folks that may be listening understand.
No, that's a great distinction. I'm glad you said that. I don't even know if I'll be able to form this into a question, so this is just kind of a comment. But I feel like I'm having a theme of mom and pops and smaller entities out there. But I'm trying to just wrap my head around about, again, how this applies to someone like that. And the scenario I go to, and I, I mean, again, I'm being a little extreme. This is rare, but I do think it can happen. And so, I just wanna make sure there's enough discretion built in that we don't ding someone. Like, the example I have in my head is, you know, you've got a mom and pop owned, I don't know, what would be a bad one, a scrap tire facility. Those can be pretty rough, right? And we have gone out there, we have found the violations that have led to administrative orders. And then something horrible happens, they pass, and now daughter owns it. And daughter has, I mean, you know, she's inherited the books, she's inherited the facility. And she has no knowledge of what's going on or whatever, right? And all of a sudden, we go back out there and we find, you know, there's, same violations are still occurring. And so, it's teed up now for a third and it automatically gets kicked to the AG's office. And while, you know, I conceptually don't disagree with that process, I just wanna make sure that in those rare, extreme cases like that, which again are extreme, there is enough discretion built in that, you know, we could give someone that walks into a bad situation that inherits something, you know, maybe one, it's, and it might just be a judgment call. I don't know, you know, I don't know how we would apply the penalty policy. Well, let me say, be more specific, this deferral issue to a situation like that. But I'm just very cognizant of those people that can just inherit a bad situation. And the normal, and I do, I do wanna make it very clear that I know the intention of this is to really get the bad actors. And I am on board with that and I know that's the goal here. But I just try and, I don't know, I'm just trying to think from a fifty-thousand-foot view of, are we still gonna be managing this well? Or is this, you know, gonna be automatic, so automatic that, man, it just somehow ends up doing something to someone that we never intended, really? If they're, it's a case of, man, they just walked into a bad situation and now always smokes there in front of the AG. I don't know, I'm probably being a little too outside of the box than I need to be. But I'm just saying that for discussion's sake, I guess, more than anything else.
So, Commissioner Lindley, what we do on these mandatory referrals is we send over a list. And then it's really the Attorney General's election as to whether the Attorney General will prosecute it or send it back to us. And we will pretty routinely offer our recommendations about cases that we think are appropriate for administrative enforcement. And in those cases, the Attorney General, you know, will often return the case, not prosecute it civilly, but allow us to seek administrative penalties on it. I think what's being proposed here would apply across the board, including, you know, twenty percent enhancement for the hypothetical that you pose, which, you know, at this point, I'm not reading a whole lot of discretion into that. That is a fixed enhancement in terms of what's been proposed here. And so, I don't know, I guess we can take comments on it. I'll observe that it's often the case that it's not so innocent. And the operator says, oh gee, that's not me, that's my cousin, you know? Or it's my brother, it's my uncle, you know, change hands and all of a sudden. You know, I feel like people sometimes game the owner-operator bit, a little bit.
I do think that is accurate.
I appreciate your concern. And, you know, are there cases where we're gonna be locked into a twenty percent? Really, what we're not talking, you know, let me rephrase that. It's not so much an enhancement, it's just not allowing somebody to defer the penalties for expedited enforcement. So, a break that we might provide in one instance is not being allowed under this set of circumstances. So, I hope that helps a little bit. And I think I'm inclined just to put this out for comment and see what kind of comments we get on it.
No, I appreciate that. And I, you know, again, I'm kinda being crazy in my thinking on some of this. But anyway, I appreciate that, that's super helpful. And I do think you're right. I mean, the hypothetical I propose is pretty hypothetical. I don't know, Chairman, I think it was just you and I on the dais, but I go back and let me just caveat this by saying this was not an enforcement matter at all. But when there was a remediation site in front of us, I don't know if you remember that matter, but, man, it was painful. And some of it was because some folks hunted inherited property from their parents. And that's remediation, I get it, that's totally different. But I just, man, that one always just has weighed heavy on me and so, I always have that in the forefront whenever I'm thinking of things of just, I mean, we did the right thing. I still would support what we did, the action we took, but that was a painful one. I don't know if you remember that, but.
I do.
That's where my mind, that's where my head was in this thinking, if that kinda helps, even though it was remediation and not penalty policy.
Thank you. Commissioner Janekka, any input at this point?
Appreciate the discussion, I think that's really helpful. And appreciate the potential, I do exactly the same thing, Commissioner Lindley. Take the most egregious scenarios I can try to think of and how do I break this and make it look really bad if we give the green light to it and we're trying to think through what looks really ugly in retrospect? I think this is fairly narrow and I very strongly agree with the sentiment of your concern. And across the board, I hope that- And across the board, I, I hope that, uh, ED staff have a good, uh, good dialogue with the public in answering their particular concerns. With just that in mind, I, I hope that our agency doesn't, through this proposed change and, and series of, uh, posture shifts on enforcement and how we try to broadly handle enforcement, uh, I hope we don't inadvertently ratchet up and make it tougher for mom and pops to survive in the state. Uh, so I, across the board, I certainly hope that we're mindful as an agency in thinking through where, where we want these levers to hit. I think in this instance, we're clarifying that a sixteen sixteen, uh, sixteen sixty administrative order would, in certain circumstances, we're, the ED, I think, is tying, tying their hands with, with a little bit of a public, this is not eligible for, for this type of a deferral, and, and still seems like it, it fits within the broader, very flexible framework within ED, within which ED and, and alleged violators operate in trying to reach that, that settlement. Uh, and that's where I think the penalty policy really, really addresses that, that part of our agency's work. Um, I'm, I'm good right now, I, no other questions from me, appreciate that discussion though, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. I just have a final observation, or plug really, before we hand it back to you, Brian, and that is, um, speaking of mom and pops, the agency has an outstanding program to support small businesses and local governments, or small business and local government assistance programs, program, um, provides that, uh, support and outreach to help bring those entities into compliance, and they're a great resource for our, uh, smaller regulated entities. Um, Brian, with that, I'll let you, uh, continue on.
Well, uh, really, the, uh, thanks, Chairman. Really, the only, the only other thing is that there are some other non-substantive edits that, that would be made to the penalty policy, such as table of comment contents, uh, formatting issues and things like that, uh, but there are no other, uh, proposed edits that, that I need to review. Uh, just to repeat that, that the, that we would move forward with, uh, uh, pursuing public comment, uh, as, uh, as the ED has already laid out, uh, for a period of thirty days, we would do that by, uh, making a press release and, and putting the information on the agency's website, uh, and then we would come back, uh, once we have the, the public comment summarized and, and see what impact it has on our proposed changes to the penalty policy, and then we present it to the commissioners, uh, for their consideration at a future work session.
Uh, thank you for that, Brian, and, and, you know, at this point, and we'll hear from the, the, we'll hear some public comments in a little bit, but tentatively, I'd say, in my mind, at this point, it's certainly ready to go out for proposal, and I don't have any additional shot, thoughts to share on the penalty policy at this point. Um, colleagues, as to the penalty policy, before we move on to the compliance history rule, any additional thoughts or comments on, on this? All right.
Well, I, I'll say, I've always got a comment, right? Um, you know, kind of just putting a bow on probably my theme of the morning on this topic is, um, you know, few, few quick things, I guess. Um, you know, we, and I, and I know this is the ED's goal, so I'm, I'm kind of regurgitating it, but, you know, my goal as well, and I think it's a shared goal, is that we are, we always want to ensure that we're treating those that are trying to comply, right, different than repetitive bad actors. Um, you know, I, I, I know you gentlemen say it, I know I've been out there preaching since I've been in this role for the past two years, that compliance is the goal here. Um, but there are bad actors that need, you know, that we need to, um, treat differently. And so, you know, that's, that's kind of the goal that I want out of this penalty policy to, to con, I think to continue to sure make that, or to ensure that that happens. Um, you know, and I, I always try and walk that fine line of, and it is a very fine line, um, of making sure that we're not gonna, um, partially penalize an entity that is trying to get into compliance quickly, right? And I, I just think that's a fine line, and it's hard to do, um, and I think it's, you know, if we dive into that a little on the penalty policy, um, but I just kind of want to make sure that that still exists too, that those entities that, uh, are trying to get into compliance quickly aren't, aren't personally penalized. Um, and I think that discretion probably still exists enough in the penalty policy to be comfortable with it. Um, and I do mostly consider that to be, you know, your, um, just entities that are trying to do the right thing. Um, as far as timing, you know, I, I think we all want to get this kind of, um, done quickly, and so I don't know if we want to provide more direction as far as a, a, a date to put this out there, I don't know, if the ED and all that, you know, everyone else talk as well, you know, I, I could probably be fine saying, "Hey, we want this back before us," you know? I don't know, I mean, we're at the end of September, so if you do thirty days, maybe in November, but I, I don't know, I'll, I'll toss that out there, it's kind of, I'd like to see it done before the end of the year, uh, and I think probably everyone is in agreement on that, but, um, I'll just kind of make that statement that I, I'd love to have this back before us, um, in November, and I don't know if that's too, um, it might have been other comments coming, so I, I'll, uh, I'll just stop there and, and just, those are kind of the only comments I'll make about this and be done.
Brian, what does your calendar look like on this?
Um, what is the...
I'm sorry, the calendar look like on this? When would you anticipate, um, having a, having a final policy ready for our consideration?
Um, we would, uh, we would, um, it would be challenging to get it done by the end of the year, I believe the next, the, and I do not recall when a work session is scheduled in December, I know there's an agenda scheduled, I believe, on the eighteenth. Um, uh, we would have to, uh, we're planning to, to send the press release out next week, and, um, and then start the public comment period, really kind of have it run through October is what we're thinking, and then that would give us, uh, whatever days in, in November to prepare for, uh, to pre, prepare for agenda, uh, prepare to bring it back to you, um.
Yeah, Brian, this is Toby, let me jump in. Um, yeah, if at all possible, uh, we would bring it back in December in front of you. The, I think it really depends on the, the number, um, of comments that we get and where some of those things go, and if we get an overwhelming number of comments that maybe bring some things to light that, that we missed in putting this together that might, you know, I think the worst-case scenario is they, comments come in front of us that would necessitate probably another discussion with you all in a work session before we make it final. I think that would probably be the, the biggest, um, obstacle to trying to get it done by the end of the year. But, um, if the number of comments that we get is manageable and we can get it turned around quickly, then yes, I think, uh, getting it, um, to you guys in December at that agenda, or if we just want to, if we need to ask to schedule another work session, I'd be, you know, okay with that, that for it as well.
Thanks, Toby. Commissioner Janekka, any thoughts on the penalty policy at this point, before we...
I think we've landed squarely on my one concern about trying to set a very firm date with, with moving forward on it. I, I share Commissioner Lindley's desire to get this done with, uh, not done with, but to, to get this, uh, to have this discussion fully and robustly and, and completely conclude it, if at all possible, before we get into the excitement and uncertainty of the legislative session, which comes early next year. Uh, and that's, that's where I think there's a, a real concern in my mind, so I'm, I'm, uh, that, that makes a, a great argument for not setting a firm date. If, if a lively public response puts our staff with a, a huge work crunch and a, and a date certain from us, that, that doesn't speak to me like it's a great environment to make a policy decision. So I'm, I'm eager to continue this discussion as quickly as we can, recognizing our, our constraints at this point.
Thank you for that. And Toby, with that, I think we're ready to move on to discussion of the, or presentation of the compliance history rule changes.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, Chairman. So bringing back up the compliance history rule idea, um, the idea, again, behind this is really trying to address a gap that I believe exists in the compliance history rule as it's currently written, and that gap is really focused on the three, the three incidents that I held up earlier, ITC, TPC, and Kimco. And the perfect example of that is we just ran compliance history numbers, and Brian, feel free to jump in here, but I believe that TPC is still currently satisfactory. Is that right, Brian?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, and I think that's the perfect example to present to you guys as far as what the community went through, um, in, you know, in trying to, um, remain safe through that incident, um, four-mile mandatory evacuation, day before Thanksgiving while everyone was out shopping. Um, that's, uh, I think that level of event needs to be able to be addressed, um, by this agency in a more real-time way, especially with compliance history. During the last legislative session, I had to go sit with a member, and the, the question to me about ITC was, "Well, obviously, they're gonna be unsatisfactory now, right?" And the answer to that was, "Well, no, that's not, that's not, they, they're not gonna be unsatisfactory." Um, and from a common sense perspective, I think we have to have the ability to adjust and address these very specific, huge events, and we currently don't have that sort of discretion built into the compliance history rule. So at a very, um, high level, essentially what we're asking for is the ability to take that idea forward, try to identify the correct circumstances where it allows an, uh, the executive director's side to move somebody into the under-review status, and then, um, figure out what that means. So I think there's two goals in getting the green light from you guys to move this forward into rulemaking. One would be trying to identify what the right circumstances are that allow for that sort of discretion to come in. So helping, um, put the guardrails up, um, Commissioner, uh, Janekka, to, to address some of the concerns that you, that you, um, that you raised earlier about a possible activist, you know, executive director who starts to wield tools in ways that they were probably never meant to be used. And then the, um, and then the second part of the discussion in the rulemaking would be, what does under-review mean? And what does that, what kind of constraints does that status put onto an entity that has had one of these major, um, catastrophic events that have impacted the public in, in a major way? And we believe that the way the statute's worded gives us that authority to create a new, um, a new category. And so we've already done that with the unclassifiable category, and so looking at, um, at the way the statute's worded, we believe that we do have that authority to create a new, a, a, a new, um, category. And then, uh, and, and then as part of that under-review status is, so what does that mean? What does that, um, what, what kind of constraints does that put on a regulated entity? And then finally, so how do you get out of the, how do you get out of the penalty box, so to speak? Uh, um, and how long do you need to be there? So there's these fundamental questions that I think we need to answer, and I think the rulemaking process is, is designed to do exactly that. Um, but the reason why we wanted to bring it to you was to see if there are their specific ideas around any of those things that I brought up that you have, that you would like us to contemplate as we are, um, if we get the green light to move forward with this idea. Um, so I'll stop there, Chairman, and if you have, you know, further questions about just sort of compliance history, how it's calculated, um, again, we have, uh, Brian on the, on the line, who's the expert on this sort of stuff, you know, um, it's pretty formulaic if you go to the statu, the statute, uh, about how we calculate compliance history, but it doesn't contemplate these, these sort of, um, these odd and rare events that, um, that end up impacting everyone, you know? Um, every, every entity who's a refiner or a chemical plant, or any large industry, is impacted in a negative way when one of these events happens, just from a, the social license to operate, and it's not, in my mind, it's not fair to those operators. And so that's the other side of this. But I'll stop there and, uh, and, and maybe pass it back to you and see if you have, um, specific questions or ideas about where we should take this, or if we should take it forward.
Yeah, thanks, Toby. Um, I'm strongly in favor of moving forward with the rulemaking on this, because it, it, you know, for, for some of these, um, operations where there's, you know, an egregious violation that results in a, you know, in a real impact to the community, it just creates a mockery of the compliance history programs have to say, "Nope, that's, that smoking facility over there that just blew up is a high performer." Um, that doesn't work. Um, so we need a way to, to, uh, to review that and sort of just bring some sandy back to the, to, to the meaning of the program. Um, but, you know, the devil's in the details always, and there are two main areas that I think that we're, that are, that we're gonna really need to focus on. Um, I don't know if I have a lot of good guidance, but I'll just lay out my thinking on them, um, high le, in a sort of high level at least. One is, um, how do we, what we're proposing to do is give the executive director a lot of the new discretion, and how do we appropriately cabin that discretion is, is one central topic. And, um, you know, we've talked about, you know, defining what kind of events might trigger, um, might trigger this review, and there actually are a couple different ways, you know, probably a multitude of different ways to go on this, but you could define it narrowly to a certain set of types of events, um, that would limit the executive director's discretion. Um, there may be some merit, and we should consider whether we define it a little bit more, um, broadly, because a, you know, if a fire that is controlled in four hours, um, that doesn't have significant off-property impacts, um, is, could nevertheless, you know, come from some egregious, uh, human fault, system fault, um, that indicates a poor performer, um, you know, you know, looking at the totality of the facts, um, and should we be looking at those, um, that might find, uh, fall on the, on the lesser severe end of, of big events? Um, that's an open question in, in my mind. And, yeah, I think that the, I think the tighter that we, the narrower that we define it, probably, um, the more frequently you'll have the under-review category result in a, in a downgrading to poor performer, I'm, I'm guessing. Um, but, um, and, and the broader you have it, the more reviews will be going on, and you'll be able to, um, to have a, a, you know, a deeper look at some of these events that are significant, even though they're not on the front page of the newspaper every morning for a week. So how narrowly, um, or broadly we define that list, I think is an important question. I actually don't have an opinion on it right now, but I'd like, um, to see what the, what the, the comments look like on it. Um, and then the other, the other piece of the guardrails is what kind of review do we provide for that? And I think it's certainly appropriate to have the commissioners, um, check the executive director's work, have the regulated, give the regulated entity the right to, um, to appeal the, the redesignation or reclassification to the commission. And there may be other, there may be other, um, um, measures that could be taken to help, um, appropriately cabin the executive director's discretion. Um, the next big part of it, as you indicated, is what does under-review mean? Um, you know, does that, uh, you know, what do we do? What, what consequences flow from that and when? Do you negative consequences in terms of, um, permitting actions or other enforcement actions accrue immediately upon designation? Do we wait until there's a determination on the review and a reclassification for any additional sanctions to kick in? Um, and on that, you know, I do have concerns about sort of the due process, and you can imagine a number of different fact scenarios, um, you know, a, um, um, the same explosion could be caused by a totally unforeseeable or unavoidable event, um, or it could be caused by just blatant, uh, negligence on the part of the, the owner or operator. Um, and, um, I think, you know, if it, if it's totally unforeseeable and unavoidable and no fault of the, no fault of the operator, um, it seems like it would be unfair to have those penalties kick in immediately, um, that really due process demands for some review process to be, um, to be completed. Um, and then as you suggested, you know, how is this gonna work in terms of how long is the review process gonna take? What does a review process entail? Um, how does a regulated entity get out of that box, as you put it? Um, all of those concerns, I think we just need to, um, um, explore, and I think a good way to do that is by, um, pursuing the rulemaking process. So I wish I had some good ideas for you on that, I think I don't at this point, but those are my preliminary thoughts. I'm all for... I'm all for, uh, forging ahead, um, you know, with those issues in mind. Mr. Lindley, what are your thoughts on compliance history rulemaking?
Um, yeah, basically ditto, um, pretty much everything you said. I mean, I, um, I think we can probably do this rulemaking if done right, um, you know, I'll, I'll tell you right now, becau- you know, just because there's so many unknowns and what-ifs and things that need to be defined more, you know, the things you just rattled off, I, I can't really restate any better, um, I don't know what the right word to use. It, uh, I'll be anxious to see what actually gets put into a final rule. Um, I just think there is a lot of, um, hypotheticals that need to be thought through, and, and I'm not saying that ED won't, and that they, you know, might not have already started down these things, but, you know, I, just to second some of the things you said, the things that jump out to me the most are kind of the, the what-ifs that jump out to me the most, maybe that's how you say it, are, you know, how we, how we are going to define exigent, right? Exigent, can't ever, that word always comes out wrong the first time I say it. Um, you know, is it, um, is it better to have it narrow? Is it better to have it a little broad? And are we going to, is the rule going to say, you know, if you meet A, B, and C, then you're automatically put into under review? Um, and, you know, I just, I mean, those things, those are, those are tough things to define, and so, um, it's hard to weigh in on what I think about it until I see them defined, just to be very candid. Um, you know, and I'm very interested in knowing what the vision is for, what are the consequences for being under review, um, for an entity? Um, you know, does that mean, uh, more inspections at their site? Does that mean more, um, financial disclosures? You know, I, I mean, there's a number of things I think we could, that could be defined. Do they need to do a, I hear the term root cause analysis done a lot? Um, and do those things have to be done and completed before they're, you know, is that all in the under review? And at what point are they moved from under review to a different, you know, what, what's kind of that checklist while you're in under review? Um, and, you know, one of the, one of the things I do, I don't, I don't think you mentioned this, but one thing I'm curious to know how it'll be handled, and ED doesn't have to answer this right now, but just something to think through in the rulemaking more, is, you know, we, I want to be very careful when this is being, um, defined in a rule that we're very specific on, is this idea, is it related to a, um, I think I know the answer, but it, are we talking about a site, a facility, or a company? Because I think we need to be very specific in stating that, you know, uh, there are a lot of entities that have multiple sites, and I, um, you know, I, uh, I don't want this to get caught up into a whole, you know, every, if you're just listing a company, it just needs, in my mind, needs to be very site-specific, and so I just want to make sure that's built into the rule. Um, so I think we can get there, um, it just, yeah, I, I think there will probably be a lot of comment on this, and quite frankly, I welcome it, it'll probably, will make it more complicated, but I think we need it. Um, and so, you know, I, I don't know what y'all are thinking, well, I'll stop there, but I am curious to know the timeline, kind of what, what we're thinking on this. Um, rulemaking obviously takes a number of months, and with this one, it's one of those, I want to get it done, because I do agree it is completely awkward and very difficult to explain to anyone, whether it's the media, or a member of the public, or a member of the legislature, how a TPC can still be considered satisfactory. I mean, that's just, it, that's difficult to explain, and so, we, we need to have a better way of dealing with that, those, you know, kind of circumstances. And I know that's what the compliance history rulemaking is focused on, is those kind of extreme, um, incidences, but, um, you know, once you open it up, it's, it's open, and so, um, I don't know, I, it'll be interesting to see what, how things are defined. I think we can do it well, um, we just need to, I want to get it done, but I also want to make sure it's done well and done right, and so, we need to take a little time to make sure that happens, and we need to be opposed to, you know, rushing and getting it, and, and I don't think anyone was saying that, to be very clear, but just kind of make that statement, even though I think it's something we're all thinking, this needs to be done right. Um, I'm, I'm more focused on right than rushed on this one, so.
Commissioner, this is, uh, this is Toby, let me just, one thing you kind of spoke to, just want to, uh, be clear, we're really focused on this gap that I think exists in the rule. If the comments that we get in, to your point of opening up the rule itself, if the comments that we get in get into the structural and foundational innings of the compliance history rule itself, um, I will tell you right now, we are not, we are going to respond to those comments with essentially the answer that that's not, that's not what we're considering. Um, that's ultimately a job for the legislature to consider, and not us, what we're looking for, i- i- or how do we, how do we capture and respond to the three events that I mentioned earlier? And so, um, so just know that as, as we go through this, um, it, we are opening up, but we will not be, I, I mean, I want to be on the record with you guys, with the public, that if you are planning on trying to change the entire program in your comment, we will not consider that, and that's not part of this. So, hopefully that gives you some comfort.
It does, I'm, I'm glad that, I'm, I'm glad you chimed in with that, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Janekas, thoughts, comments?
I'm, I'm very comfortable moving forward, knowing that it's going to be putting us into, all into very uncomfortable space in, in whatever open time period is after we, after we start on this, uh, it's not a small change, it's, it's a big, uh, a, a substantive new authority that would be given to the executive director where, where that ED does, does not currently hold it for our agency, for our state. I think that it's certainly a necessary element flexibility that we need. I hope that we don't undertake a change, uh, thoroughly consider how and, and why and where we want to make the change, and at the end of the day, all it does is save the agency from some embarrassment. Uh, I would much rather prefer to see us taking meaningful and deliberate actions with, uh, clear, clear rationale for why throughout the process, rather than merely giving ourselves the ability to, to say that, uh, that satisfactory entities are now under review with no meaningful impact or no meaningful change, and, and I'm not worried that that's, that's the direction y'all are going in at all, I just have to say it now, uh, but I, I'm, I'm confident that y'all will really think through all the levers deliberately. Uh, I'll voice just one concern and urge you to, uh, be cautious in how you think through specific, specific features or, or steps that you might want to tag this, this lever to. If, uh, there has to be some, some evidence of a big event, and where we want to do is try to be very specific and, and list out those factors that would qualify as a big event in our mind and our thinking, I think there's a real pitfall and a, and a risk that our agency always has in courting, uh, trying to point to local actions or local orders. I would hate to have a county judge, or a mayor, or someone who's considering standing up their, their local emergency operations center, and there's a perverse incentive that has been created through our agency's, uh, rulemaking, where you might have private, private industry or, or entities or individuals urging that mayor or that county judge, don't, don't stand up, don't call it a, a situation that needs to have an EOC stood up yet, it's, we're not there yet. If, if we're incentivizing, there, there's some real, uh, real potential for surprising and, and, uh, very negative policy outcomes here. So I would just urge y'all to think those through, and I, I don't think that, uh, a public, public, uh, proposal process for a rulemaking would withstand that, we wouldn't get to the end there, but I, I know that that's something that I'd like to have a discussion with y'all as we're developing that. That's all I'll say, thank you.
Thanks Commissioner Janekas. Uh, Toby, any additional thoughts on the compliance history rulemaking?
Uh, no, I think all of, uh, your comments are very, um, great for helping sort of, uh, point us in the right direction and giving us, um, meaningful things to think about as we go down this road. Um, Commissioner Janekas, your, your last point especially, I think there's a, there's two sides to that, I think it goes both ways, you know, um, a public official bending to public pressure, or industry pressure, or whatever it is to try to either protect or drive an outcome that, um, probably doesn't match the idea of what this rule change is actually supposed to be about. So, um, so, all really important, um, and I think one of the big questions that I, that I hear is, um, the, should, you know, one of the questions that I'm asking myself after listening to you guys, um, sort of talk about this, is should the under re- review, uh, category be a classification of its own? And that, or should the under review category be sort of a, a penalty box that then sends you to unsatisfactory or back to satisfactory? And so, does it, um, and I think that, I'm going to, I'm going to think through that a little bit, and, and, um, and does the, and, and essentially the under review classification serve as its own classification that puts certain parameters in place that sort of pauses things, or, you know, I'm not sure what the outcome of that would be, but then essentially, as soon as, um, if we find that, hey, they're, um, this, this, this entity, this site is actually in pretty good shape, that they, you know, we can move them out of the under review classification, and, um, and, and there is no sort of going on to sati- unsatisfactory, like, they just stay there until their next, uh, you know, for some amount of time if we find that they don't, um, warrant being pulled out of that classification. So that's, that's something, just, uh, Chairman, after hearing you talk about sort of a under review as a process to something else, um, is wrestling with, should that just be its own classification that sort of has that process built into it, and you just, or housed there? Because that really comports with the statute that allows us to create a new classification. Um, but that's just the one thing that I, I, I wanted to know, that I wanted you to hear, that just in this conversation, I'm going to be wrestling with here pretty quickly to make sure that we can address that specific question as part of the broader, the broader, um, discussion. Um, but that's a, that is a, and then also, uh, Commissioner Lindley, that you brought up the root cause analysis idea, that's an interesting idea as well, and I'd have to, I'm going to have to think through that a little bit and see if there's space to figure out how to roll that in, but I know it kind of gets to, obviously, some of the concerns that I addressed earlier with this disconnect between what we actually regulate and permit versus what I think the public thinks we do from a process safety standpoint, and, um, and so I'd have to, I'm going to have to wrestle with that a little bit from a, a legal authority question, um, but I do think that there's, that's an interesting idea to bring into the mix. So, um, with that being said, uh, that's, that's all I have on this, if, unless there are other questions that you guys have.
Colleagues, anything else? All right, well, why don't we move on to, um, public comment? Um, Ms. Smith, have, do we have some folks signed in to speak on this item?
We do, uh, the first person we have is Ms. Catherine Fraser.
Good morning, Ms. Fraser, uh, I ask you to just identify yourself and any affiliation, and, and, um, go ahead when you're ready, I think we're allowing three minutes each. And Ms. Fraser, you may be on, on mute, so.
There we go, I think I just got it, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yeah, good morning, thanks for, uh, thanks for signing in and being part of the meeting.
Good morning, thank you. Um, yeah, thanks again for the opportunity to provide testimony today, my name's Catherine Fraser, and I'm the Clean Air Associate with Environment Texas. Uh, we're a nonprofit advocate for clean air, clean water, and open spaces. And first, I just want to thank the TCEQ staff for their proposed changes to the penalty policy, and to Executive Director Baker for his powerful words, uh, this morning. It's really a sign that TCEQ is listening to community concerns and working to approve, improve accountability, so thank you. Change to the penalty policy is clearly needed. For example, according to our research, TCEQ and the state of Texas find companies approximately one cent per pound of unauthorized air, air emissions in 2018. In that same year, companies reported 4,590 unauthorized air pollution events that resulted in 135 million pounds of illegal air pollution, more than two times the amount of the year before. Clearly, TCEQ's current policy isn't deterring violators, but the proposed changes should help. For example, staff propose increasing base penalties, counting more violations, and a 20% higher penalty for illegal air pollution in counties with populations greater than 85,000 people, or, or perhaps 70,000, as y'all were saying earlier. This is good news that comes after a string of high-profile accidents, fires, and pollution events that demonstrates the need for a more effective deterrent to the rash of violations that are putting the health of Texas communities at risk. More still needs to be done to put an end to widespread non-compliance. I worry that these steps alone won't do enough to change a culture where polluters find it cheaper to pay a fine than comply with the law. So I urge you to take additional steps to strengthen the penalty policy. You should make sure no polluter profits from violating the law by ensuring that penalties always recover the full economic benefit of non-compliance. You should eliminate the affirmative defense for emissions events, which exempts polluters from all penalties, and you should issue mandatory penalties for unauthorized air pollution. I again want to thank TCEQ for proposing these changes, and hope that they are the first in a series of improvements that aim to hold polluters accountable and ensure the health and safety of Texans. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. And Ms. Smith, who's next?
Next, we have Mr. Sam Gammage.
Mr. Gammage, go ahead and identify yourself and your affiliation, and the floor is yours.
Thanks, can you hear me Commissioners?
I can, good morning.
Great, thank you Commissioners and, um, ED Baker for allowing me to speak today. For the record, I'm Sam Gammage, General Counsel at Texas Chemical Council. First, I want to begin my remarks by letting you know that we understand and appreciate the need for the agency to review their penalty policy as it's been, has not been reviewed for several years. Additionally, over the 2019 year, there were significant incidents in industry that also warrant a review of the compliance history policy. Um, I want to note that I appreciate the commentary earlier between the Commissioners and the Executive Director's office, that hashed out a lot of questions that I would have, I wouldn't otherwise had, so appreciate the commentary there. Um, on the proposed changes to the penalty policy, we have no objections to the currently proposed increases to the penalties in the penalty matrix. However, we are concerned about the additional adjustment for penalties in counties with 85,000, now it looks like it'll be 75,000, um, a population base. While we understand the added risk for areas with larger populations, we do not think it is justified to compound base penalties for entities that happen to be in one of these counties. This creates a new precedent that discriminates between counties based on an arbitrary population figure. The agency already had, already utilizes a human health category matrix, and we feel it is duplicative to create a separate and additional population-based category. More importantly, I'd like to move on to the potential revisions to the compliance history. We, this is our principal concern. With the incidents that have taken place, we understand and support the need for the agency to place sites involved in serious incidents into a quote "under review" category, and conduct further investigation to determine the cause of the incident. However, we have concerns about any determinations regarding potential sanctions against a facility that are made prior to a complete and thorough investigation. Any prejudgments or sanctions placed on a regulated entity prior to a thorough investigation, in our opinion, would violate due process principles that are the bedrock of our administrative and judicial process. We do feel it would be reasonable to authorize increased auditing, inspections, or even require root cause analysis to be conducted by the company in a timely manner. Additionally, TCC appreciates the agency identifying specific triggers to determine when a site would be subject to be playing, placed in this under review category. Defining specific actions that trigger this designation are important if it impacts a site's regulatory standing, or if there are sanctions associated with this designation. We would recommend that if these triggers are identified, that, that ED identified or used, that the agency be certain that it actually has the authority to regulate based on these triggers, and not something that would fall under the jurisdiction of another state or federal agency. Finally, we also recommend that an under review designation be limited to no more than one year, providing adequate time for the agency to conduct a thorough investigation, but also be consistent with current TCEQ compliance history timelines for NOBs. Under Water Code Section 5.753, an NOB must be considered in compliance history for no longer than one year, but must be removed from compliance history if it is deemed to be without merit.
Mr. Gammage, wrap it up there, please.
Yes, I'm done, so, um, do you have any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for, uh, thanks for, uh, um, being part of the meeting and submitting your comments. Uh, Ms. Smith, uh, who's next?
Mr. Adrian Shelley.
Morning, Mr. Shelley, I'll ask you, go ahead and identify yourself and affiliation, and the floor is yours.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners-
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Adrian Shelley, representing Public Citizen. Appreciate the opportunity to deliver comments today. Uh, did submit some written comments as well. Uh, those were written without the benefit of today's conversation. Um, so I'll probably try to revise some of that, but I'll encourage you to, to take a look at those. I do want to address, uh, a couple of things that I've heard today, so I may not be able to get to everything in my, uh, written comments, but I think it's more important to discuss, um, particularly the, the really insightful comments that we heard from Executive Director Baker at the beginning of today's conversation. Um, found myself largely agreeing with the, the sentiments and the particular points in there. You know, to the question about the increasing expectation that TCEQ respond quickly to disasters, um, I think that's correct. There is an expectation of that sort, and it's true that TCEQ doesn't have first responders, um, but the world moves more quickly these days. You know, we're in a, in a world where, um, people are going to learn about these incidents within minutes of them happening via social media or other channels. Um, and the best way to, uh, counter misinformation or inadequate information is to get out in front of it. And so I think that the commission, uh, needs to really look at its role, look at how it can work with first responders and how it can more quickly respond to incidents. Um, so the point about the amount of public money, uh, that is burnt in response to these big disaster events, I agree, it's probably not a good use of public money. Why don't we charge the cost of those responses to the companies, uh, that caused the incident? Maybe we need some legislation to that effect. Um, to the point about continued referrals to the AG's office, I think that's great. Um, we want to see results from the AG, but that's a different matter. Um, to the point about, uh, mobile monitoring resources and vehicles stationed in Beaumont, Houston, and Corpus, we agree wholeheartedly. Uh, we hope to see that in the legislative appropriation request that we understand will come out soon. Um, so with my minute left, I'll move over to what I said about some of the comments, uh, that I wrote. Um, agree with most of what Environment Texas said, the general principle that penalties need to serve as an economic deterrent. Um, we agree with the, uh, revisions to the matrices. Uh, we would point out that another, uh, potential way to increase penalties is to speciate for violations. If a violation includes, uh, you know, 10 pollutants, uh, 10 separate penalty, uh, permits, uh, or, or permit, uh, violations, you know, that's an opportunity for 10, uh, penalties. And that's not a, an approach that, uh, TCEQ has typically taken. Um, the revision to the petroleum storage tanks, I heard a rationale there about the cost of compliance. That seems like a great rationale. Um, I do raise the question of whether, uh, federal delegation, uh, of this program might be jeopardized by this change. There's a required approval from the EPA there. Um, the compliance history, uh, we want to see those revisions before we comment on that. And the last thing I'll say, the point about, uh, counties over, uh, 85,000, I agree to Commissioner Lindley's point that the real issue is where people are located. Um, people near, uh, pollution is the real issue here, and so that's what should be addressed. Um, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Appreciate the comments. Uh, colleagues, any reactions to any of what you heard? Mr. Lindley, no, Commissioner Janekka? Uh, Toby, any, any reactions to what you heard or any closing thoughts or comments?
Uh, Chairman, not much. Uh, just thank everyone for being part of the process and, you know, the, we're really relying on the public to help us with this. When, when the penalty policy goes out for public comment, we're inviting, um, we want to make sure that the public is engaged in, 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 at every step, whether it's the penalty policy or the compliance history rule. And so, um, I just want to make sure that that is, um, that's, that, that the public knows that. And so, um, with that, thank you for letting me bring this forward today. I thought it was a great conversation. I really appreciate, um, the effort that you guys put in on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, colleagues, any closing thoughts or remarks?
No, I, you know, all I would say is, um, you know, I know, uh, unfortunately, the pandemic delayed this conversation, so I'm glad we got to, uh, actually take it up today. And, um, I, I'm hopeful that by the time it comes up, maybe we'll get to do it in person, um, that we'll be in a better place and, and we can do that. But, uh, this was great today. Really appreciate all the work that ED did, um, in order to, um, bring this before us today. And, um, I know it's been discussed and worked on for a long time, so very appreciative of all the work done.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Janekka?
I, I really appreciate all the discussion today, and, and I feel like it's been a, a good culmination of the ongoing past year of my education into how, how much our agency really is in many respects two different agencies. We, we permit and authorize and, and try to give permission to act, but then how we go about, uh, following up and, and trying to preserve the integrity of that authorization is an entirely different process. It's, it's entirely more complex than I ever appreciated in the past. So I, just to bring all this back to, back to the, where we're at and, and remind us, I'll, I'll just state in a little more layman's terms what this all means for us and what we're doing today. Uh, this is the first real substantive change to, uh, fiddle with the penalty policy that our agency has made without any clear backstop on, on legislative direction or, or marching orders to make specific tweaks or changes that I'm aware of in the past 20 years. And so I think that that has really necessitated a lot of uncomfortable thinking and, and new thinking from, from ED staff and trying to look back over the past, uh, past several, several years that our agency's been operating in, in a very changing, uh, state economy and growing state economy. So I, I have a newfound appreciation after the past year that I've been in this role that the penalty policy really necessarily is just a set of, hopefully, clear set of guidelines for a statewide application of, of what is just an, an inordinately, uh, un, uh, a, a dynamic landscape. There's, there's almost, it's almost impossible to try to apply a statewide once it, once that's its old approach to this. And I think we've hit throughout the conversation today on a lot of alternate routes and escape, escape shoots where things might go to OAG or a different entity entirely for, for state enforcement. But for where, where this hits our agency's posture and how we grapple with the, uh, the oversight that we execute, I think it goes directly to, to the problem that Director Baker addressed at the start of this, uh, discussion. Our agency is grappling with, with trying to better use and, and utilize our tools in the current, uh, industrial, economic, and, and environmental landscape our state's in today. And I think this is a very honest attempt at trying to define and think through some, some new tools that would give the ED some new discretion and new authority and where to chart, uh, his or her course. Uh, and I'm just eager to hear from the public. If, if this doesn't get to what we've said we're, we're trying to get to, I, I've heard already from industry, there's, there's no real deterrent factor to the amount of penalty to what we do in our decision-making. We, we don't, nobody wants a release, nobody wants an accident. I, I get that. I think we also have to acknowledge the growing public sentiment that the disconnect just doesn't seem to be closing consistently across the board. 2019 had a few too many egregious incidents and, and disruptions, uh, in, in our broader state's landscape. So I'm, I'm really eager to continue this conversation and I'll just repeat, uh, Chairman and Commissioner Lindley's comments to wanting to hear from y'all and wanting to hear from the public. So please do provide, uh, very specific and, and, uh, robust comments to us if you can. And, and I hope that ED can come back quickly. Uh, look forward to continuing this conversation and just thank you all again today.
Thank you, Commissioner Janekka. And to both of my colleagues, I really appreciate hearing your thoughts today. Thank you for that. And, um, my thanks as well to everyone who participated in today's meeting. Ms. Smith, is there any more business before the commission this morning?
Did you want to address OPEC before you leave this item?
I think that's a fantastic idea. Thank you. Mr. McWorder, we just about, we left you hanging there, I should say. Good morning.
Oh, that, that's quite all right. Good morning. I was happy the way the conversation was going, and I don't have anything substantive to add. I'll just echo that I, my office also looks forward to seeing the comments of, uh, people, and we hope everyone's actively engaged. We may be collecting some thoughts of our own to share during the 30-day, uh, comment period on the penalty policy. And, uh, thanks for asking. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Vic. Uh, so Ms. Smith, uh, any, any other business or are we, are we, are we, can we call it a wrap?
No. Item three is for closed session, and the commission is not meeting in closed session today.
Thank you. So with that, the time is 11:49 a.m., and we are adjourned.